Everybody has the minutes from the February twentieth meeting? Any changes or comments additions? I'm gonna take a motion.
Motion to approve this kind of meeting.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes of February twentieth, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approve the agenda for tonight, any additions or changes that anybody sees? No? Yeah?
Motion to approve.
Motion by hack to approve.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion? All in favor of the approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Alright, five. A, dog waste concerns, Merrill Star is not here. We all saw the note and apparently she talked to Mr. Wolf.
She had talked to Jim at the police department there.
Okay. If she is here, I would just say that we're probably not gonna put a dog crap dispenser just run on town from the pickup, but that's too bad that neighbors have to be like that. Have you talked to, not you?
Yeah.
Dan, sorry. Um, five B, local permits, let's do both of them, we have we have one for Hazen Arts and Crafts Association and one for the English Lieutenant Church Youth Group.
Motion to approve.
Wolf?
Yep.
Motion by Wolf to approve both permits.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Just go to water and sewer. Commissioner?
The, uh, the city crews that are, um, getting sewer line between, uh, between, uh, City Hall and hot stuff here. And then, and then, uh, right now, they're out at the corner of, uh, of, uh, of, uh, of, uh, Fifth Street and, uh, Second Avenue, right now, and probably an active jet of line or two as well. And it's like later on, I guess we'll talk about the piece, so there's agreement, clean and, and I guess, um, videoing this a lot.
Apparently we had a few backup series in this, so it doesn't come in epidemic. Any else, Casey?
No.
Sorry. Okay. Streets cemetery.
I feel like guys finally, uh, seeing some melting on our streets and I haven't heard from or out of any concerns, Casey, or with the gutters backing up or everything seems to be melting slowly and draining wells, so that's all I have.
Have you, Steve, have you talked to Jason about cemetery, about building a road this summer?
No, we're gonna visit one later after the meeting, but I
I haven't had the chance to stop.
Finance busing.
Uh, we had one of our bus drivers, um, candidate or notice, so we are looking for another bus driver. Um, I think that Ann is already in, it's out there, so if you know of anybody. That would be all that we have.
Alright, Dan's not here. Buster, HCD.
Well, you probably
Yeah.
saw where the, they started framing pretty nasty weather today, though. Wind and whatever. You know, and then he figured that within probably two weeks they would have been able to probably have the Raptors ready to go. So Daryl, I'm farming up. So I didn't talk to Daryl today for seconds about the office, but so it's moving along. You know, it would be nice if, uh, or they would have offered a little, or too bad we didn't have last week's weather for them.
Okay, well, it's nice to see something going up.
Yeah.
Speaking of building, I, last week I had a citizen, my regard pretty highly is a pretty, uh, smart man, knows a lot of things that's going on, and he was very concerned about the way Williams builders is building his homes outside the Lewis and Clark. His, his words were being slapped together without, you know, you know, things were looking to him, I think. Uh, he'd not stepped foot in uh, just, I don't know how far distance he made his judgment, but just so you know, Lauren Weest is our, um, uh, he's our inspector, he has been going out there, uh, and looking at those. I went out there and walked through them with Tim Williams and Daryl World, and then I went out to the person that does some contracting. The exterior walls are two by six walls. Interiors are two by fours. And the, all the studs are, you know, sixteen inch stud center, it's I thought is sort of the general, it's what, that it would look very, very nice, the way, the way things are being put together. Floor drains in the, in the garages and, um, even the, the twin homes. You know, the way that they have the twin homes side by side, they're you know, on each side is a bedroom or bathroom, so there's no loud living spaces. And then even between there, the wall structure is they have two by four walls with sheet rock insulation, sheet rock insulation, so they got insulation barrier between the two. Then sheet rock insulation, sheet rock again, so it's, it's almost like two houses just side, side to side almost without siding. So, which is for soundproofing as much as you can really do without giving, you know, much, what, for the part, so if you have citizens questioning that, make sure you let them know that we do have a building inspector that goes out there and Daryl will take them through those places anytime they want. Not something they are doing, wiring and heating and earth plumbing and stuff, so I thought things were looking very nice out there. So, just so, in case you guys help across some of that's being negative.
What, what did, did you go back to, uh, citizen or?
I have, yeah. So, wow, I don't think they're doing, they're slap, you know, how, how it go up so quick, he says, so. Doesn't have, doesn't have, I'll be slow when it takes. Alright, let's move down to nine A, employee assistance program agreement. With the CHI. Same A's you can see, uh, it's interesting to see those percentages of how much our employees have used it in the last few years. Um, but if you guys wanna go, move into agreement again with them to use their employee assistance? We need a motion.
Nothing has changed or
No, that's the exact same program since two thousand nine is when they started doing it. Same cost and everything, kind of surprise.
Uh, motion to approve the CHI employee assistance program agreement as
Okay, motion by hack.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Case.
So then are we gonna go with the eight?
We're gonna continue with the eight sessions.
Sessions, okay.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Wolf? Aye.
Over to her.
Aye.
Motion passed. Alright, the pace, pace, uh, televising and cleaning agreement. Casey, wanna?
Sure.
You know, I think we've done a nice, you know, I guess, like, did this in the past and probably like haven't probably haven't nice, you know, I guess, like, done all that much of this in the past, uh, like five or six years probably, and, uh, I know that, I guess, the water department, you know, kinda like made up a map here of, of areas that I mean, we should have probably you know, it's like video and, and clean, you know, yes, like problem areas. Uh, you know, it's sort of like one area, you know, it's from, I guess, you know, it's I mean, it's like City Hall here, you know, block like north, and then then down down, I guess, like west, I guess, I guess by the bank. And then, you know, another area is that, uh, that cul-de-sac, that's, uh, or, uh, archie, I guess, that grows up, that's, uh, you know, all the water is present, it's like a mold. You know, and then, on that line I think there might be some, uh, you know, some tree roots growing in that.
On that particular street, I had a conversation, just chit chatting with Ryan about it. And it sounds to me like when you come off that hill, the old, uh, piping or where it's made out of, it's, it's staggering. So when you try and go up it, he said you're having to try and hit it to jump over that lip and it's staggering ultimately. Same way down past Arches, but coming from the east going up to the west.
And then, I guess, the lift station one, you know, it's that that one's really deep, I don't know if it's like, uh, you know, I guess you know, I guess you know, I guess, I point to some feet deep and, uh, it's not able to clean that out itself, so, you know, that's good, I'm gonna do that as well. And then them three projects or areas, you know, would probably be about like eleven thousand dollars. You know, I'm not sure if you wanna get back and back into the, I guess, you know, I guess, routine of, of just, uh, like inspecting areas of town. See what's what what condition that, uh, lines are in, yeah.
I, I agree, I, I think those need to be done for sure, and I think you'd like to ca- do some more camera, uh, checking on some of the other older areas that we have too, that's I, I think it's just pays dividends to prevent a maintenance to do a little bit of that ahead of time. Um, have we ever looked into buying one of those cameras, or are they pretty?
Uh, we could have actually got one on the Jetter back thing, but the cost of the camera, if you're not experienced in using it, we were told that you'll be replacing a camera every year for thousands of dollars that you get used with, so
Okay.
That's, that's why we didn't opt to put that on when we got that Jetter back.
Okay. Okay. So, Casey, you recommended we do just the outlined areas that you have highlighted for now?
Yeah. I move that we do them, them three, uh, areas slash, uh, projects for, uh, for almost a total of, of, I guess eleven thousand dollars.
Give it a motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by hack, discussion.
Great, Casey.
You know, I guess, you know, it's like moving ahead, you know, I would like to do areas of town. I know it is really, really expensive, you know, not possible. It's a dollar a foot, you know, just to get inspected, about another dollar, you know, for it to clean it, you know, and if you're down there, it's not gonna clean it, so, you know, a few dollars a foot, well.
Um, the cleaning part, so basically the cleaning we can't do, so with our new Jetter, we can do some cleaning, right? We just can't do remove tree roots and the large, the obstructions on the Okay.
It's maybe probably like some of the cleaning, but you know, if they're already down there, you know.
Do it, do it right.
Yeah.
Already down there, you might run into massive tree roots, so.
Yeah. You know, then after, after a week, we, we probably don't really know whether or not it's all clean or not, you know, so.
Okay. The, the mapping that, that Dick and Ryan showed you and or Dick. Is that, do they have another maps showing what they've done last five years at all?
We haven't talked about that, not too much, but, uh, I can discuss that with them.
Yeah, check with, check with those three and see if they have something on record that shows that, and then we can start. You know, like, just the old, the old section for sure, just and, the, the entire community, city should be done, but if you wanna start getting with them to decide, sort of picking out.
That's all I was gonna ask, you know, and, and the previous year, I agree with this. I don't know, I know it's expensive, but we put it off and put it off, and we're gonna keep having more serious issues, I think.
Yeah. Preventive maintenance is still cheaper than regular history.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Stern? Aye.
Hack? Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Over to her.
Aye.
Motion passed. Ten A, Commerce Center Parking Lot B. Okay, we got it's been laid out already, we've got the three different sections. That has, okay. So if anybody's not sure, you know, what, you know, the one track is right in front of Commerce Center building. The other goes, it's kinda splits where the, the other building starts most of north, then the third tract is the, the grass section, so it's I guess this would be our read.
And that first one during the third street, I think you did hear that?
Yeah, that does. To the west.
Yes.
Yep.
That whole lot, including the Commerce Center, all are a lot high, it was only a single lot. So they divided that down into additional parcels.
The Commerce Center was a part of what?
It was a parking lot.
Parking, parking lots.
Okay. Alright, so if you wanna make this official, we can do that this evening. Buster, you talked to your, your board and they're gonna take this land and hopefully
They would, they would, uh, just sit out at all?
Okay.
But so you're talking about all three pieces?
Correct.
Uh, man, what is it, mandatory mechanical, they don't want their any other space up front, okay.
No.
No, they don't wanna pay the specials.
Okay.
We don't either. There's about sixty-five probably on the specials left on that.
What's the new name?
Mandatory.
Mandatory mechanical, something.
So then on the specials, then, we're not gonna be paid in full class? I don't believe we're paying totally the shit for it.
If you'd like that, we
Maybe more than half the state.
I don't believe that's part of the, figuring it out. Alright, so if we wanna do this tonight, we can, need a motion.
Sold.
Motion by Wolf. Second. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call. Wolf?
Aye.
Stern? Aye.
Hack? Aye.
Over to her. Aye. Motion passed. We'll sign this tonight then and
Can I just get a clarification? We're getting all three, we're getting the whole Angela.
Yep. Yeah, oh beers. Alright, ten B. Hotel land. Buster, you wanna talk a little bit about?
Well, uh,
You're saying?
Basically, we, we were looking at there, because the city has, you know, opted, uh, or probably not in the best interest of the city to be involved in, you know, if that hotel project ever comes to fruition, that they be involved in it, and so the idea would be is if the partial, the land that is there, so that we could use it as part of, uh, equity. If it were needed to HCD, then we could turn around and use that as part of equity for the hotel piece. And the, uh, the only thing I can tell you is this, that when it was appraised the last time around, uh, it, it appraised it four hundred and one thousand dollars. That partial, so, so.
So then that would be a huge piece of part of equity?
Yes, and the, the, the one thing that bothered is, is the way I understand it is, is, you know, uh, it really as far as us or whomever placing a value on that partial land, you could place where the value would be wanted, as long as it was appraised at that. So it could go, you know, uh, and they're, they are in the process of having a new appraisal done, because our appraisal was, had expired, it had been over a year. But as far as the, uh, dimensions of the property themselves, that hasn't changed yet. And I can't remember, Steve, did we, was it one point eight nine acres that was out there at one time that we were that, that's what comes?
I think so, yeah.
So we, we talked about this, uh, about two meetings ago, about the benefits, uh, that we would do for project. Getting it moving, I know that there's been, uh, quite a few meetings as of late, so I'd like to discuss those in in detail, uh, but if we wanna do this, deed it over, so HCD can use it as equity, then we need to, uh, have Mr. Donovan start working on the paperwork, but we have not officially directed him to do that yet. And as the investors are being approached, stop me if I say something that
Yeah, I will.
That, that, that know, for them to know that the land has been being acquired and that there's a management company on board and a builder on board and a, a brand on board, that that piece is not just for equity aspect. The assurance of the investors, so it's very nice for them to know that there's, not the city, but the city, I guess, kind of, but HCD has scheme in the game too. So that's a, a really good piece for, for the puzzle, so. And obviously the taxes and everything that we, we getting back down the road. But, uh, if, if anybody, you don't need a motion, ask Pat to get, draw up the paperwork and complete it, do we, Pat, or or that'd be best?
What we've done in the past is, yeah, uh, uh, either a joint powers agreement with HCD or some agreement to, to transfer that for the purpose of the development.
Right, okay.
Like you did with part, uh, campground.
Okay.
With a part for.
Okay. Because, and let me get get a feeling for this, if the hotel project doesn't happen, then the land can be barzing impact, or if, once we deed it over, it's just done, but
Well, it depends on how you structure it.
Okay, so we can structure it that way. Okay, alright. And that'd be my, that'd be the person I wanna come, come from, so.
And of course, from the, from the standpoint of, uh, adding it to the piece of equity would be, would be a nice shot for that portfolio, with no question of ours, because I think I had mentioned earlier, like, you know, really from the previous deal, for this, doing it this way, if it comes in at that kind of money. And I'll be conservative and say it is, comes in at three fifty. And you were gonna get a hundred and fifty for it before, that's a half a million dollars, that's going directly into the project in terms of equity. So I realize, of course, that the, uh, under the new proposal, uh, the project is a hundred million dollars, estimated to be a hundred dollars more with the uh, Conference Center that we're talking about. Having as a part of that as well. So and, I mean, uh, that's, I'll, I'll be quiet.
Yeah.
I won't say anymore.
Okay, so how do we direct you to start drawing up and so we can have it? If there's opposition, I wanna hear it, uh, but I, I, I wanna make sure we're doing this uh, the right way, but, uh, on a sidebar about this, last week I, I was in all the third grade classrooms and in all the seventh graders too, talking about c- city government. And I asked them, I asked the kids to grade the city and how we're doing. You know, give us a letter grade, you know, I guess, from Bs to As, and I said, so, it sounds like we're doing is about perfect, and I mean, well, no, no, no. So what, what do we need? And the three things I kept hearing over and over and over a rec center, fast food, obviously, kids, and a nice hotel, were the top three things I kept hearing, kids. So, anyhow. Alright, Pat.
What I would do is develop some draft document, and then, then your board will get a chance to get yours and get their acceptance or modify.
Alright. Thank you. Moving on to eleven A. The busing, uh, documents. You wanna talk about that, or?
I think that's Monty's.
Monty?
Under federal transit rules, we had to come up with a public participa- participation plan for our Title VI project. Basically, the state put out a template to comply with the FTA guidelines. All we had to do was plug our name into the, to do the compliance, so that's what we got. We have the Title VI plan as far as discrimination as color and religion for years, and we just had, didn't have the participation part of the plan in place before, so that's basically the only change.
Okay. Someone needed a motion to
And I'm asking that if it affected March first.
Yeah.
Sold.
Motion by Wolf?
Second.
Second by hack, discussion. Roll call. Wolf?
Aye.
Hack? Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Over to her.
Aye.
Eleven B, water heater replacement, City Hall, if you don't know, we have two eighty-five gallon heaters, had one of them, uh, about a month ago, not even, not that long ago. Started leaking, they're residential grade, they're marathon. Um, marathons, if they're a commercial purpose, they have lifetime warranties, well, it's not commercial, or it's not residential, so we got, we don't have a warranty. Uh, we do have some estimates on some more on hot water heaters and I hope you all had a chance to look at them here, but there, there's quite a range and options of what to do. In my opinion, you'd think two eighty-five gallon hot water heaters would be plenty, but we've had a lot of In my opinion, you'd think two eighty-five gallon hot water heaters would be plenty, but we've had a lot of. People that rent the hall say that they always mount a lot, which is amazing, uh. But Jason said that, you know, the residential grade just don't, they don't heat as fast as the commercial grade piece does. But, uh, so we have some options of, uh, what you guys like to do. And Pam have a recommendation or she said anything at all? Okay.
You know, Jason did mention one of the things was the fact that the one water heater was actually feeding the other one, just kinda serving as more of a warmer. And that just wasn't one either, so.
I don't think the option of adding an eight gallon heater under the sink is the answer, in my opinion. I don't know, that, that would be not in a heartbeat, I think.
No, it's, it's just basically there, so they would have eight gallons of hot water, just like that, and then it would go back to the, what's in the tank.
So if we add two commercials, it would both be. Or lifetime warranty, did I hear that right?
I don't know if there are.
No, no, even a commercial now is only gonna have a fifteen year warranty as far as most of the components, there might be a lifetime, Jason said on all of us.
But more than what a residential one is.
And he isn't, and he's, if we go with a commercial hundred and twenty gallon, he's saying one will be more than enough. Cause it has actually up to six elements in it, so, and they're stacked throughout it, so it'll, it'll recover a lot faster than any residential water heater will.
I asked Jason then if we need to have the hundred and twenty gallon and the existing eighty-five. He said eventually you could probably do away with the eighty-five, but it's nice to have some backup just in case. Um. Or we can get rid of this one itself. But, uh, if you don't know, you can't even get an eighty-five gallon for residential anymore.
Than for a commercial water.
Yeah, yeah, now that, that probably Trump will change that. So, not sure what your guys' thoughts are, please.
So they asked like, what about like a, like a tankless water heater?
Not enough recovery, I asked him that right away. Uh, on demand tankless, uh, not, he said not a chance, cause you'll have people telling them to go. He said for the first, like, twenty gallons, it's really good.
Yeah.
And it, and it's, you know, doesn't take up any space in your, in your room, but. He's a poor luck, he's had people, he's replaced them, you know, he's put them in for people and then replaced them for people too, but. Uh, and if you guys want another, I feel kinda weird, this, this is my brother, so if you want another estimate from Klein, I'd be happy to do that too. Did you talk to Tim?
Okay, alright.
What was, what was the price again, I can't. I don't read through.
On the commercial?
Yeah.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, thirty.
Now this fifty gallon Bradford White, is that a commercial or is that a?
No.
That's residential.
He's talking about three fifty gallons.
Okay.
But not having them feed each other, they will all be separate.
And those are what, fourteen?
Fourteen eighty-five for all three. But then you go back to a residential water. Obviously, you've got more options than if one goes out, so. Well, we put another eighty-five gallon back in to replace the ones that's gone bad and see if we get another ten year. At least. They were both put in at the same time, so we're only concerned there, everyone is.
Right, no, was it clear?
Ninety-nine. Got almost twenty years.
Yeah, for three, I mean, three times the amount of one commercial, I mean, that's the way to go.
I would like to see the commercial one go in, I, I think it would be worth the money to. To go that way, probably get rid of the eighty-five that we have, if we can sell it or, or keep it as a backup, but, um.
I could tell it dies.
Would ya? It could die next week, so. Yeah, but I, I would go with the commercial myself, I am.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, sure.
Jay.
And keep the eighty-five as a backup.
It's a motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Wolf, whatever.
Hi.
Motion passed. I, I do wanna go back up real quick, I'm sorry, to my reports, and we'll let you know that. If you don't know yet, we had a seventh grade girl, Sloan McCray, win the mayor per day essay contest in the entire state of North Dakota. So she, we were at the Capitol last week, she ran in front of a total hundred people, got to meet the governor, shake his hand. Uh, it was a very nice event, and Dan's actually got some pictures of her and I in middle school. And, uh, she, she wrote about, uh, raised, uh, community gardens. And, uh, super nice young lady, if you get a chance to meet her, she's. She makes eye contact with you as she talks, she shakes your hand with a firm grip and her, her parents own a buffalo farm south of, by Lake Mills, south of. That's, you know, nice young woman. Okay, um, approval of the bills.
Motion tonight.
Motion by Wolf.
If you're anyone back up, since you're here.
Who?
I never, I wanna back up tonight, uh.
Okay.
Everything went, so I clocked work with the Axel and Fargo and I never heard any.
As far as I've heard, yeah.
I have no news, good news to me.
Looks like we're running, we're running well, it means it has breaks. Thanks, Pat.
Was there a second on the?
Not yet.
Session?
Second by hack, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Wolf, whatever.
Hi.
Motion passed, meeting adjourned, thank you.